And call the September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Newburgh Planning Commission. And get a roll call, please.
Jeff Musaw.
Here.
Jason Dale.
Here.
Laney Quinn.
Here.
Sharon Capri.
Here.
Mike Griffiths.
Here.
And Chris Wright, Avery Hansen, and Linda Newton Curtis is absent.
Thank you. So first up would be a public comment section, um, section for anything that's not on the agenda. If anyone wanted to make comments, I don't believe we have anyone here that wants to at present. So we'll move on to consent calendar. And ask for a motion to approve minutes.
I move that we approve them in.
Second.
Okay, um, have a motion in a second. Can we just get a voice vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 And that passes. So moving on, um, first item of business is a quasi judicial public hearing. And this is for a conditional use permit, file number CUP two, three dash zero, 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 nine. To use a single family dwelling as a vacation rental home, and it's located at three, two, three, eight East Province Court. So I'd like to, um, call that meeting to order and ask for any abstentions, bias, ex parte contact, and objections to jurisdiction. Okay, not hearing any. Um, we'll go to the legal announcement.
Sorry, I'm doing it. ORS one nine seven point seven nine seven requires certain statements to be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval or denial of an application. The planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or the evidence towards the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issues which might be raised in an appeal of this case to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA, must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is known as the raise it or waive it requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you can't bring it up at LUBA. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval in enough detail to allow the local government or is designated to respond to the issue pre- precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on an application, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission will grant such requests through a continuance or extension of the record.
Yeah, thank you. So moving on, let's go to staff report.
All right. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Clay Downing. I'm the Planning Manager for the Community Development Department. And I think Faye is going to queue up a presentation for us in just a moment. All right. So this is for conditional use permit, CUP two, three, zero, 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 nine, which is at three, two, three, eight prov- East Province Court. This is for a quest for a conditional use permit for a vacation rental. So the applicant and owner is Jason Phillips, who's here in the meeting room with us today. The tax lot number is R three, two, two, one, B B, zero, zero, seven, one, one. It's located in the R two zoning district. And the applicable criteria that we'll be going over today are those for fifteen point two, two, five point zero, six, zero, related to conditional use permits and fifteen point four, four, five point three, zero, zero, through fifteen, four, four, five point three, five, zero, related to vacation rental homes. And what I will be doing with this presentation is basically reading the staff report into the record, so I'll be walking us through that today. So here we have the location, including an aerial map and a picture of the frontage of the house at three, two, three, eight East Province Court. As I noted before, it's located in the R two or medium density residential zoning district. This is a zoning map of the property. So you can see from the zoning map here that there is the, the properties to the north and the south are R two, as well as those immediately adjacent across the, the street or court there. And then there's R three across Springbrook Road, a little further away, and see a little bit of a corner of M one in the kind of northwestern portion of the map that's shown here. And to the rear of the property or eastern portion, that's the stream corridor overlay that you see there. So there's a, a stream or water body running through there in a wooded area towards the rear of the property. This is the utility map. What we see here basically is that the majority of the utilities are shown loading into the property from East Province Court. It's located in front of the single family dwelling, including water, stormwater, and sewer. The existing single family home has five bedrooms. It has, will have four off-street parking spaces available, including the garage and driveway spaces. The use is considered compatible with other residential uses in the area because it's similar in size and scope to owner occupied and other regular rentals that would be occurring in the proper, in the adjacent properties. Related to criteria fifteen point two, two, five point zero, six, zero, B, relating to location design and site planning of the proposed development. So this is located approximately, uh, one point one miles west of the downtown central business district. And it's going to be used in terms of size and scope and how it would be operated, similar to that of a long-term rental dwelling or one that's longer than thirty days or an owner occupied dwelling. So this is considered consistent with this criteria as well. Criteria fifteen point two, two, five point zero, six, zero, C, proposed development being consistent with, consistent with the code. So this will be consistent if it is consistent with the special use criteria that we'll cover on the next couple of slides relating to vacation rental homes. So the location is an existing single family home that's located in R two zoning. So it meets the criteria associated with being a single family dwelling. The application materials acknowledge that the applicant understands that, uh, they will be required to register and pay transient lodging tax associated with operation of the vacation rental home. Standards associated with the property and vacation rental operations. There will be a minimum of two off-street parking spaces provided. The proposed project is going to have a mock maximum occupancy of ten guests per bedroom. Or sorry, not ten guests per bedroom, ten guests, only two per bedroom. That's all you get. The, um, and then there will be weekly, weekly waste collection provided by Waste Management. And then the premises will not be used for RVs, tents, or other temporary shelters. Additionally, the application materials acknowledge the requirement for posting information at the property related to um, rental management company, police, vacation rental standards, maximum, maximum occupancy, trash pickup, and related activities. And so with that, staff recommends that this commission move to adopt Planning Commission Order two, zero, two, three, dash seventeen, seventeen, with conditions approving the conditional use permit, CUP two, three, dash, zero, 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 nine, for a vacation rental at three, two, three, eight East Province Court, Yamhill County Tax Lot, R three, two, two, one, B B, zero, zero, seven, one, one. And that's the end of my presentation.
Well, thank you. So moving on, let's go to, um, public testimony. We'll hear from the applicant first, and then if there's anyone else wishing to speak. They would be limited to five minutes and they could speak for or against, but they would need to turn in a form, um, to speak. So go ahead and do that if you're going to. But with that, let's invite the applicant up. Um, come on up and state your, um, name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Jason Phillips. I'm the owner and applicant of this particular project. So I, um, should I just proceed with a little bit about the background?
Yeah, yeah, just go ahead and give us a quick overview of what you're hoping to do.
Sure. Um, so I built this home, um, as a place to have here in Oregon. Um, we currently reside in the state of Texas, and about however we have roots here, and we do like to come back and visit. And rather than have the house sit vacant for a long period of time. I came in, uh, uh, contact with, uh, a great property manager who actually, um, has her office right next door. And after speaking with her, uh, we determined that, uh, there's definitely a need for some short-term housing for a lot of people that have, um, like loved ones in the hospital and their family needs a place to stay for, you know, shorter time than, according to her, there, she didn't really have a lot of properties in that area. And so we, uh, pursued the idea of creating this, um, property is one that would serve the purpose for not only ourselves and our family, but, uh, for potentially the community and providing some additional housing opportunities. So that's what brought me here today.
Um, thank you. Any, um, Commissioners have questions?
Nope.
Okay, um, we'll go ahead and we'll, um, it doesn't look like we have anyone else willing to speak. Um, if there was someone speaking in opposition, you'd be invited back up for a rebuttal. But since we don't have anyone speaking in between, there's no need for that.
Mr. Chair, maybe we should, uh, ask if anybody's on Zoom.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So, so with that, there's really no need for you to even come back for rebuttal and everything. So, um, if there's no questions, then I'll go ahead and close public testimony. Um, thank you. And then I'll ask for final comments from staff and recommendation.
The recommendation from staff is unchanged. Staff still recommends that the commission move to adopt Planning Commission Order two, zero, two, three, with conditions of approval for CUP twenty-three dash zero, 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 nine.
Thank you. And now, um, Commissioner deliberation. Anyone have anything?
We're quite a bunch this evening. Uh, Mr. Chair, I move we adopt CUP twenty-three dash zero, zero, nine as, uh, presented before us.
I can second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Jeff Musaw.
Yes.
Jason Dale.
Yes.
Laney Quinn.
Yes.
Sharon Capri.
Yes.
Mike Griffiths.
Yes.
And with that, the motion passes. Thank you. And next up, we have another quasi judicial hearing regarding a conditional use permit. And this is CUP two, three, dash, zero, zero, one, one. Conditional use permit to use a single family dwelling as a vacation rental home. This one's located at one, two, zero, eight, East Tenth Street. So go ahead and call that meeting to order and ask for any abstentions, bias, ex parte contact, or injections to jurisdiction.
Uh, Commissioner Quinn, I, I live pretty close to here, not close enough to have received a notification of it though, so I won't let that affect my judgment.
Oh, thank you. Okay. So with that, can we get the, um, legal announcement?
ORS one nine seven point seven nine seven requires certain statements to be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval or denial of an application. The planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or the evidence towards the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to this criteria. Any issue which might be raised in an appeal of this case to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA, must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond. This part of law is known as the raise it or waive it requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you can't bring it up at LUBA. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval in enough detail to allow the local government or is designated to respond to the issue pre- precludes an action of, for damages in the Circuit Court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on an application, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission will grant such a request through a continuance or extension of the record, the record.
Thank you. And let's go over to, um, staff report.
Thank you, Commissioners. I will go ahead and read the staff report into the record for CUP two, three, dash, zero, zero, one, one. An application for, to operate a vacation rental at twelve, zero, eight, East Tenth Street. So the applicant owners for this applicant, for this project are Carleen Garrett-Lukens. This is for an existing single family dwelling to be operated as a vacation rental home. It's located at twelve, oh, eight, East Tenth Street on Tax Lot, R three, two, two, zero, C C, zero, two, three, zero, zero. It's located in the R two medium density residential, as well as R D Riverfront Overlay Districts. Or I should say, R two district, R D sub-district. And the applicable criteria that we're going to be discussing and that are in the staff report are those for fifteen point two, two, five, zero, six, zero, related to conditional use permit criteria, and those for fifteen point four, four, five point three, zero, zero, through fifteen point four, four, five, three, five, zero, related to vacation rental homes. So this property, like I mentioned before, it's in the R two and R D districts and sub-districts. You see a picture of the property, although there's a lot of trees in the front, so it's a little hard to see the house itself. Um, on the left side of the slide, as well as an aerial map, the red box is going around it. This is located on the south side of Tenth Street between South Chahalum Street and South Willamette Street. Um, it's an existing three-bedroom, single-family home. And we'll be talking a little bit about parking spaces because there's a bit of a discrepancy in the application materials and the staff report, and so I wanted to highlight that, send a supplement. But that to say that, uh, there will be two, two off-street parking spaces required. So we'll get to that in the slide or two. This zoning map shows the, the zoning for the property. So the property and all of the surrounding properties are all R two slash R D, so they all possess the same zoning designation. Utilities for the subject property are located in East Tenth Street, just on the north side of the property itself. So they're located just in front. You see the green, blue, and yellow lines there for stormwater and sewer. And then I wanted to address that supplemental packet that went out. So on, uh, Monday, the eleventh, we sent out a supplemental packet based on a pair of comments that somehow were missed. They weren't in the case file where we expected to find them. And so there was a comment from the Engineering Division that stated the proposed off-street parking spaces are to be out of the area for a future sidewalk along the property frontage. One of the two off-street parking spaces shown on the application exhibits is in conflict with the location of a future sidewalk. The application applicant will need to identify another location for the required second off-street parking space. And so it's very hard to see it on this slide because the lights are a little high. Is it? Can you lower those? Okay. I can go to the next slide, but I will want you to see the next slide a little more clearly to show what we're talking about. So what we have on this slide is we have a comparison between two things. And the one on the right is in the application materials. And as the lights come down, thank you very much, Faye. That's better. Can folks see this? Okay, Commissioners? Okay. So on the right, we have the one that was out of the application materials. And so what that shows is it depicts a box surrounding the property all the way to the street and includes two parking spaces. And so the driveway obviously connects to the street. But on the left, we see a slide that comes from the city's GIS and shows the tax lot boundaries. And what you see there is the property boundaries do not go all the way to the curb. It is relatively common for public right-ofways not to end right where the street ends. But that's not necessarily common knowledge to every single person that calls it the planning department. So what the Engineering Division was pointing out was that part of the, one of the parking spaces being claimed is actually in the public right-ofway or part of it is in the public right-ofway. And so we, I spoke with the applicant about that after this was brought to our attention. And it was pretty readily observed that there is a garage on the, at the property. And they indicated that they would be willing to make that garage available as the second parking space rather than having two driveway spots. So that would still provide them with two off-street parking spaces. So two, two off-street, they would, one would be covered, one would be uncovered. So they would just have to include the garage as the other parking space. As opposed to the two driveway spots that were initially, uh, discussed and proposed in the application materials. So, and what that means and the reason that we didn't revise the staff report is the condition of approval is two parking spaces, but the condition of approval did not specify which parking spaces they are. But through a conversation with the applicant, they confirmed that they would be able to provide those. So that's for your consideration. Those conversations happened after that supplement went out to you. And so going into the criteria in the staff report, uh, real fifteen point two, two, five point zero, six, zero, A, related to location, size, design, and operating characteristics. This would be located in an existing single family home with three bedrooms. There would be two off-street parking spaces included, one located in the driveway, one in the garage. And again, that one's a deviation from the staff report. The staff report still says two in the driveway. But we're telling you here that based on that conversation, the condition of approval would stand. It would still be two off-street parking spaces. This use is compatible with the other residential uses in the area. Is it similar in scope to the regular rented and owned dwellings in the surrounding area? So this criteria is met. Um, this location is approximately about half a mile, about half a mile south of the central downtown business, business district. And its proposed use is similar in scope to the long-term rental and, uh, other owner occupied dwellings that are located in the area. So this is considered to be, uh, fulfill the criteria associated with location, design, and site planning. Then for criteria C and consistency with the development code, this one, this application will be consistent with the development code if it meets the special use criteria associated with vacation rental homes that we'll cover on the next slides. So for the criteria shown on this slide, uh, the vacation rental must be a single family dwelling unit. This one qualifies as a single family dwelling unit that is located in the R two slash R D zoning districts. It's, the application materials acknowledge the requirement to register for transient lodging tax. And standards are met required related to the minimum of providing two off-street parking spaces. The project would have a maximum occupancy of six guests or two per bedroom. The weekly ref- waste collection would be provided by Waste Management. And that there would be no temporary shelters as part of the operation of the vacation rental home. The application materials also acknowledge the posting of information associated with the, the property related to the owner and rental management company, police, vacation rental standards, maximum occupancy, weekly garbage pickup days would all be near the front door as required by the conditions of approval. And so with that, staff is recommending that the commission move to adopt Planning Commission Order two, zero, two, three, dash, nineteen, with conditions of approval, uh, for conditional use permit, CUP two, three, dash, zero, zero, one, one, for a vacation rental home at twelve, zero, eight, East Tenth Street, Yamhill County Tax Lot, R three, two, two, zero, C C, zero, two, three, zero, zero. And that's the end of my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have one.
Thank you. Um, with any questions? Okay, let's go on to, um, public testimony. Elevate the applicant up to speak and have up to fifteen minutes. And then if there are any others wishing to speak, we'll, um, they'll be limited to five minutes. But we'll need to turn in a form to testify. So if you were wanting to do so and haven't done that, please just do so. With that, is the applicant present?
They are. They're on Zoom.
On Zoom? Okay, um, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Garrett Lukens. I am the applicant for this, uh, rental.
Okay, we do your, go ahead.
Great. Um, so I guess, uh, for the background for this particular unit, um, Carleen and I, uh, we've both grown up in Newburgh. Uh, both of our families are here, and this is our first home. Um, very much enjoy it. And, uh, we had an opportunity happen in Portland that we're working to take advantage of. Um, but we would like to maintain our home in Newburgh. So we're, this, uh, this rental process is a part of making sure we retain the home and our connection to Newburgh and, and staying close to family. Um, and, uh, it, we would like to have options. So to have it be a short-term rental as an option is going to be great. And, uh, if not, it will be a long-term rental. So those are our, that's the background for the project.
Uh, thank you. Um, Commissioners, have any questions at all? Okay, hearing none. And I haven't received anything as far as, um, testimony and opposition or anything. So normally, if there were, you'd be offered a rebuttal time. But since we don't have that, we'll go ahead and, um, if there's no questions, I'll go ahead and, um, close the public testimony. There's no one else on Zoom, right? Okay, I'll go ahead and close that. And ask for, uh, final comments from staff and recommendation.
The recommendations from staff remains the same. The recommendation is to, that the Planning Commission move to adopt Order Number two, zero, two, three, dash, nineteen, with conditions of approval.
Thank you. And any, um, comments from Commissioners or deliberations?
Um, Commissioner Quinn, I don't have anything for me. Um, moved to pass the motion. Ah, the, um, for CUP twenty-three dash zero, zero, one, one, um, for the vacation rental on twelve, oh, eight, East Tenth Street.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Hey, you have a motion in a second. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Jeff Musaw.
Yes.
Jason Dale.
Yes.
Laney Quinn.
Yes.
Sharon Capri.
Yes.
Mike Griffiths.
Yes.
And with that, the motion passes. Congratulations. We'll go ahead and close that hearing. Okay, moving on. Now we're to, um, items from staff. And, um, looks like the first up is the anticipated schedule. If you want to go ahead and pick that.
Sure. Let me just get to the right page here. Got shuffling things around. You guys are moving through nice and rapidly. Um, one of the things as we kind of do forward looking, one of the things to me that I've been looking forward to the most is getting staffed up. So we have enough bodies to do the work that we have coming in every day. And so I wanted to take a minute to introduce our newest staff member, who you all have not met yet. So this is Jeremiah Cromie, who's our, uh, new associate planner.
Hello.
And so he'll be coming to this commission, I believe, next month. And I think that James, another one who's new to the team, is going to be coming with a case next week as well. So some of the other items that we have coming up ahead of us. Um, so this is in the packet, and you, so you should have this for you too. But right now we have three items that are tentatively scheduled for October. And it's three different vacation rentals that are coming forward for CUP requests. Um, we do also have a tentatively scheduled minor modification, the Crestview Green, CUP, and P U D scheduled for November. And then in Jan- going further out into January, we're starting to get things, as we get further away, they're more tentative. But this is what we generally have forecasting forward. So we may have a development code amendment related to the institutional zone and overlay regulations. And then looking into the year following that, still even kind of more tentative yet. Getting into approximately March is when we're hoping to have a development code amendment associate, and a comprehensive plan amendment related to the West End Mill District, and that's related to implementation of the downtown improvement plan. And so those are some of the general projects that we're hoping to see before your commission in the future over the next few months. Um, yes, do you have any questions about other things coming up?
I don't have a question. Commissioner Capri, I don't have a question about any of the things you mentioned. But, uh, I was speaking with Commissioner Wright, and we were, we've talked about it quite a while ago. And I was going to go down to Portland State. I'm an alum of the Architecture Program. And I was going to go to the Urban Design and talk to them about Newburgh. And I thought that I would need to come in and talk to you guys and get the information that maybe I could present the staff or the head of the department of Urban Design to, um, maybe give the city of Newburgh as a term project for a pedestrian zone.
We can, uh, something like that could certainly be contemplated, especially if, so the process that, that's used, being used right now by the Public Works Department associated with. The process that, that's used, being used right now by the Public Works Department associated with um, engineering students at George Fox University.
Uh huh.
So what typically happens is the university kind of comes forward and they basically engage in a conversation to make sure there's mutual interest. That the project is kind of on the radar and somewhat contemplated and feasible for the, for the uh, for the. It would be appropriately challenging for the students and something that really feasibly be contemplated by the, by the jurisdiction that's on their list. So if you wanted to do something like that and make those introductions, I think that we would welcome that. There would be some conversations probably with the city manager's office and those things if, if they're just completely new. Because if city staff, even if they're going to um. Spend time managing students and spend their time that way, we need to make sure that it's, it's feasible and it's not completely pie in the sky. But I think it's perfectly acceptable to make that introduction, to talk to Portland State, and I would be happy to make sure that you have the information you need to go speak with them.
Um, I know when I was in the Architecture Program. We would get a term project and we would spend the first part of it doing precedent studies. And it really didn't involve so much, you know, uh, uh, they would be given maybe the outline. And the things that they had to consider and the things that were important to the city.
Mm-hmm.
And then they would just go ahead and do it. But I thought it would be a wonderful. Example of maybe getting some ideas going because I have been. Wanting to see something like that. I love the city and I would just like to see more public space.
If, depending on how you want to approach it, and I don't know that it needs to be a planning commission thing, and I would invite you to come talk to myself or Doug. While, while we still have him um, at any time. And I think the engaging students and having those sorts of. Process, uh, projects available can be, can be really beneficial to the city. But depending on what, what you would envision or what Portland State might look for the involvement of the city to be. And how much they want it to align with something we've already thought of or something that's completely not on the horizon yet, that might be fine too. So I would.
Why I thought I'd run it by.
You're, and you're welcome to. So I would encourage you to make time, let me know when you want to come by and we can have a talk about it.
Talking about doing it the day after the October meeting. So I think like the thirteenth of October.
Reach out anytime before then and we can, we can talk about it because I, if you go speak with Portland State, I'd be happy to make sure you're prepared so that everybody knows. And so we can just, we can just start.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I would also like to announce that everybody's going to be getting new iPads. So within the next month, you'll be getting some updated iPads. And I will be reaching out to you to bring in your old ones and get on your new ones. So just, it's coming.
All right. So that's all I have for the anticipated schedule of planning commission activities for now. So if, if your commission. Would like to move on to the next item, we can talk about vacation rentals some more.
Absolutely. Yeah, go ahead and let's get that ball rolling.
Okay, so I'm gonna invite James to join me up here at the front table. You may see some staff sneak out behind me. That is not a personal affront. They just aren't working on this as actively. But I wanted to mention that the, so the, the report or, so I'll interchangeably probably refer to this as a report, a white paper or a research paper. To me and how we're using right now, they all mean the same thing. I know that they're actually different things depending on how someone talks about them, but I'll probably just use those somewhat interchangeably. Um, we did try and hustle up to get this to your, to your commission. And you received it in your packet, but really didn't have much time to digest it during the last meeting. So we wanted to make sure that you had the month to look it over. And so I'm not going to be providing a full presentation on this because I'm very hopeful that you all have had a chance to look at it. And even if for some reason you haven't. All of the planning commissioners on this commission spent a lot of time looking at things that are applications for vacation rentals. And have heard a lot of comments from the public. So I wanted to go over some of the highlights associated with the report. And then let, let your commission speak to each other so we can start formulating your comments. So. With that in mind, let me find my notes. So a few of the highlights. And so the report covers some of the regulations and history of vacation rentals in Newburgh. So some of the things to keep in mind is that those regulations related to vacation rentals were initially adopted in twenty thirteen. The city council last received an update related to vacation rentals and their status in March, twenty, twenty-two. And that's when they asked staff to come back in approximately a year. Obviously, we're behind that, um, but we're, we're trying to get that to them and that's the goal. And that's where the direction on this project is to really to provide an update. But this time around, we also tried to put a little more depth and a little more meat on the bones for the update that we're going to be able to provide them. The um, so one of those aspects of what's in the paper are the trends and where we are now associated with vacation rentals. And one of those figure one. Really gives a kind of permits by the numbers to kind of see how that trend line looks over the last few years. So the data that was used in compiling the report includes those from. The permit records from the Community Development Department, transient lodging taxes or T L Ts. And then uh, business license data that was used. And so what that showed, we understand that we probably haven't captured every activity going on in the city. But those that we're aware of and that we know that are occurring include approximately seventy-four vacation rental operations as of July, twenty, twenty-three. And so of those, and then there's a, one of the tables that you'll find in the report kind of splits these out through those different data sources that were analyzed, used for the analysis. Includes approximately forty-two that have applied for or received permits from the city. And approximately fifty-seven that are currently registered for T L T payments. Kind of going on, figures two and three are maps that I would say are for understanding the pattern of where those operations are occurring are relatively important. Those depict the vacation rentals where they're currently occurring in the city and the general pattern that I would. That you may or may not interpret, but what I see when I look at that is a general clustering around the downtown area. With a kind of a stronger scatter going both north and south from the downtown area and then becoming much more disparate as you go to other areas of the city. Some of the, the report goes into a little more detail on kind of the things that can be parsed out of the transient lodging tax payments that we've had over the years. One of the things that I see is fairly consistent with the permitting details is that there's a surge in that twenty, twenty to twenty, twenty-one increment. And then that level of high activity continues occurring through the twenty-two reporting period, which is the, the most recent one that we had available for use in analysis. We analyze seventy-seven public comments occurring between twenty sixteen and April of twenty, twenty-three. And so those often we, when we analyze those, we're really looking at doing essentially a coding exercise. So we can take comments that are. That are very much qualitative in nature and trying to make them somewhat more quantitative. What is the scale or frequency that we're hearing these sorts of topics that are places of concern for these folks? So a lot of them touched on multiple topics that were in those as we went through this process. But some of those that came up the most frequently, and this is in, in a form of a pie chart in figure ten. Um, are parking, so about eighteen percent of the responses, uh, the public comments involved parking concerns. About fifteen percent involved safety concerns, about fourteen percent involved traffic increases or concerns about traffic increasing. And about fourteen percent were associated with noise concerns. So as we've noticed, noted here earlier, and I believe it's commented in the report as well. The city doesn't currently have data that allows complaint data to be parsed out for vacation rentals versus general ones. So that's something that is mentioned, but overall the data is absent because we don't have it. So we're not able to distinguish between those if they are occurring. But one of the things that's been noted, and this is more anecdotally from Doug, is that since twenty sixteen, the Community Development Department has only had one specific complaint that's come in. Associated with vacation rentals. Now, that is not including concerns. Or things that people have said at public comments. These are things that specifically someone made an attempt to make a submission to the Community Development Department. Uh, the report includes an excerpt from the city's housing production strategy because strategy I does address and talk about approaches that could be considered. For uh, future policy options associated with housing and retention of housing for uh. For long-term rentals for things other than short-term rentals in that specific strategy. The report also includes a comparison of a number of different regulatory approaches associated with vacation rentals and short-term rentals. And so those are generally lumped into categories. Um, where we talked about them as non-conformance-based approaches. They include things like grandfathering, amortization. Production-based policies, things like home shares or prohibitions of certain types or aspects of vacation rental operations. Concentration regulations, things like caps or density requirements or uh, limitations. Operation-based regulations, so things like using enhanced technology to ensure compliance. That's a little bit addressed in the next bucket. Uh, permit conveyance, so with whether it runs with the land, runs with the owner and those sorts of things or permit duration. Um, and then enforcement mechanisms, which is also related to enhanced technology as an option, perhaps uh, in, um, increased or enhanced inspections. And then um, different mechanisms for addressing complaints or violations. Overall, when we look at this, and this was just a, a quick comparison, I'm not, I don't think it's actually in the report itself, but when you look at the number of households. In the city, according to American Community Survey, most current data indicates um, what we have. And when compared with our data that we had here, the current situation associated with vacation rentals shows that. Less than zero, uh, less than point zero, one percent of the housing stock is occupied by vacation rentals. But that, although that's a small number, that doesn't mean that. We can't express concerns over what it's doing to the housing stock and those sorts of things. I just wanted to share where that number's currently at. Uh, on September fifth, because this is related, even though it's not exactly the same thing. I went ahead and presented the comments from this commission to the city council. And so those are the comments recommending a moratorium on processing of vacation rentals by the city. The city council did not take action to do that or go forward with that at this time. They did receive it. They seemed interested and very interested in the topic. And they did decide to create a committee that involves now two of the city councillors, commissioner, or councillor Wheatley and councillor Kilburg. They're gonna be heading that and working with staff um, as well as kind of looking into the issue further. So one of the reasons that I took away from that and speaking with them was they knew that this research was coming down the pipe as well. And so that, but one of the things that I would. Say to this commission is it does let them know that that option is on the table, that a moratorium is available to them should they choose to do it. So they declined to do it at this time and really wanted to see. What comments they were going to receive from your commission as well as what the research would hold that we're going to present to them. So that's it for the highlights for tonight. But one of the things that I wanted to go into and leading into your discussion of this. Is I really wanted to encourage you to speak with each other because these are going to be your comments. As staff, I'm certainly happy to receive your comments, but if you're just talking to me, you're not necessarily talking to each other. And my goal in saying that is that I would like to make sure that this planning commission has an opportunity to get. Um, some digestible concise comments that the city council knows what to do with it or can. Really think about it in a way that's productive because your planning commission has dealt with. Application after application associated with these things. You have heard the public comments. You have seen the applicants coming forward. You have heard. Why they're coming forward and why they think these are appropriate things for them to do. And so I'm sure that each of you have your own opinions. Myself and James are going to be here to help record these comments. So. Once we start getting to this, my recommendation would be, and it's not an official. Official recommendation in the way that our typical planning commission orders and those sorts of things are, would be that. The conversation end with someone on this commission making a motion of being second and voted in to make sure that we capture it correctly and transmit it. And we have, um, we have dry erase boards in the room. We're gonna be copying notes. I have even posted notes and all sorts of other stuff if, if the conversation gets convoluted or hard. But I would really encourage you to speak to each other and decide what wants, what do you want to see transmitted to the city council? And also bringing to staff's attention, things that you feel are really worth it, worth observing in the, the report that you have before you. As well as things that you think are absent that you would prefer that are in there. If staff can, we would like to modify, we would be open to modifying the report to address some of those concerns. But at the same time, the city council has made it very clear they would like to receive this sooner rather than later, just as you wanted to receive this sooner rather than later. So I don't want to turn it into something where we, we create a whole new exercise either. But I, I do appreciate the input and perspective that you all bring. And with that, I would turn it over to your commission.
Oh, thank you. And um, who'd like to start? Uh, as far as suggestions or um, items you liked or didn't like?
I do have one. Commissioner Capri, um, I have one thing that's always kind of troubled me. About the vacation rental locations and it seems to me that. It, I would, I would like to see maybe some kind of. I don't know, uh, areas that would not be as likely to. Have the vacation rentals in like, like um. Places where it was more families and kids and schools and stuff. I, I think that. Downtown and all of the area, you know, uh, around. I don't know what direction that is, but that, that direction. Yeah. To have, to have the vacation rentals maybe being more in the downtown core rather than being out in the residential areas. That's all that Mike, like. The one that we did tonight with potentially having ten people in it and having. It be a neighborhood with kids and families. I don't know how that would affect me if I had a family, young family and someone had a house next door to me with. Ten occupants for the weekend party or something. Not necessarily party. Yeah, but anyway, that's, that's the one thing that always kind of screams at me is the location.
But when you um, when you look at location like that, and then are you talking about um, a limitation? Per. Zone per area or like a concentrating thing around town or looking at specific neighborhoods?
I could, I think that could be talked about, but it's also to me is if a home has six bedrooms. Do you really, can you really say you want twelve people there? I mean, can there be a limit? It depending on the area, maybe that would be more appropriate depending on the area that the vacation rental was in. If it was in a residential area, maybe the limit of occupants could be lowered, whether or not it had twelve bedrooms or not.
So are you saying more a limitation on the number? Of people that are in each one or on the total number of vacation rental?
The geographic location.
Like, how would you like that down into, you know, into something actionable? You know what I mean?
I, I think, I think what the chair is saying is, is you'd have to go by zone, not. Not specifically around, you know, and in, not by a case-by-case basis. There's too much room for subjectivity there. I think is, is uh, the idea with that. So, so uh, you know, pretty much all these rentals are in. You know, either R one or R two typically. There's not much R three in the city. And so uh. So if, if you're going to make some kind of restriction like that, it, and base it upon. Being in a residential zone, well, all of them are in residential zones. So, so you know, you have to come up with some criteria besides zoning to do that. The other thing is, um, sure, it says ten for occupancy for. You know, given that, that particular size, you know, I mean, we've seen others who've seen fifteen, twenty, whatever it is. But that's, I think that's a pretty outside case than the norm. But. So it's, so do you, do you regulate based upon the extreme, you know? So I don't know.
I'm just. Microphone.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm just saying that. Would it be possible? If a home in a really residential part of the city. Had five bedrooms, would it be possible to say to limit the amount of guests and occupants? That could be in that depending?
It's possible, sure, but you have to come up with a set of criteria that works, not just for that one and for all of them, you know, otherwise. Otherwise you're into uh, uh, shallow legal water, shall we say?
Um, Commissioner Quinn, so I almost, I kind of see what you're saying, but I feel like I'm kind of coming from an opposite perspective in what I'm hoping we can accomplish here because you're saying that. If I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, you're saying it'd be almost better to keep it in the further out density versus the downtown that has it.
It's better to keep it more in the.
So I'm, I'm looking at figure three, if I'm not mistaken, because that kind of shows like that heat, like kind of the concentration and density. And um. I, I believe I kind of, I, I believe I disagree. I think that if we, because I'm. I, I believe I kind of, I, I believe I disagree. I think that if we, because I know some of the places, I feel like it was out on the Oregon coast actually regulate based on like the like distance, like in square miles or square blocks or to regulate it in a way that keeps it at a cap per area. And if anything, if we can't do a a moratorium that maybe got turned down from the state council for the time being, maybe we actually do it in a way that would limit it based on that fact that that's already so dense. And if any more are going to continue in the immediate future without creating laws that have caps that would help prevent it just from becoming a vacation rental town. Just I think that would be the better way to go is by starting in the already overly dense area where most of the concentration of those applications are coming and we're likely ones that aren't being tracked are also coming from and slowing that down. So we can get a better grip on that. So we have a better control of the density that is actually coming through. Microphone, 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 micro, microphone.
I am completely opposite of that because I, I like the idea of the vacation rentals in the more urban zones of the city rather than outside in the neighborhoods.
And I agree with you in that this is the downtown. That is the attraction. You want to be in walking distance. I myself am, and it's the best. Like, and I totally get why we, why people would want to have the vacation rentals there. But what I'm saying is it's totally the wild west right now. And that there is absolutely no limit and we, and in order to try and get a little bit more control and in an effort to try and slow it to a point of regulation so that it doesn't become, it's like when you using metaphor here, when you're cooking dinner, you add too much salt, you can't take it back out. Let's at least slow it to the point where we can control it because we can't really take it back. The amount of approvals that go out are going out and then they're approved. If anything, it should be slowing down.
I think there is a way to combine both of your concerns. I'm not sure what that would be. You got to come up with it. The example I always think of is the, the marijuana regulations. So marijuana regulations are the same thing because, because when all that came through, if you didn't have some sort of restriction on, you know, how many could be long, say 99, you'd have green the entire way, you know, because all the, all the stuff coming up there. So there's probably some sort of language that no pressure staff could come up with that says, okay, there's minimum distances in this area and less so in this area, like maybe a concentric rings from downtown or something like that. I'm not sure. But I, I think there's, I think there's a way to combine those two things.
Yeah, I was just going to go there and say, but first, congrats on the map. It kind of looks like a hurricane forecast. But like, like a concentric circle kind of thing with like a base root, kind of say half mile out from like the, the base of the concentration there, one density level, another half mile, another density level. And another half mile, you know, reduce the levels so that you're constant, you're, you're forcing the concentration kind of where it already is, but then, you know, putting a certain limit on it. But then taking that limit down as you go out and then maybe well, that'd be a county issue. Anyway, I was going to say maybe get rid of the limit when you're out in the open, out in the wine country areas, but that's more of a county issue. But something like just a bam, you start at your base, you go, you go out, say a half mile might be too much. No, maybe about right, a half mile and go, okay, there's this many allowed per, you couldn't say per block, but say per, you know, designated area. Yeah. If you did a concentric, you, you wouldn't, it would be hard to do as a square mile.
A lot of the blocks in this area too, they're not, it's just kind of a cluster. Like it's not easy to draw. Like I'm sure like some of the coastal towns are a little bit more like and it's kind of easier to do that. But out here, there's even like one intersection over here. That's like a six way and it's a, it'd be really hard to draw geographically on the, in the town. I think the best way is going to be like a distance of like circumference or radius or something like that. But and I get kind of coming out and how it could be less strict, like the further you go out, is that what you're saying? So like there'd be like, like two per square quarter mile in the city center and then going out to like four or six as you progress out or something like that.
No, no, the other way. I said it's already more, yeah, I have the bigger density downtown. But still cap it and then have the density reduce, reduce as it goes out. You get, you'll get more of a, I think a preservation of the kind of suburban neighborhoods, a little bit more concentration downtown. Maybe you'll also get more where people want to be anywhere, you know, like you pointed to.
Could I ask if you think that something like this would be viable to have the people, okay, say we have the subdivisions, like the one that we were just voting on that's out there by Allison Hotel. Do you think that there's any way that the people of that area could kind of vote and say what they would like to see? Because if I was living, like I said, if I was living in a neighborhood raising a family, I don't know that I would want to have them in that.
Beg your pardon, but that kind of tramples on private property rights. I mean, you can't have everything.
I mean, that's, that's why we're here. This is why like that is the outlet for public input for these exact things. So like vote to his point. No, but like this is what these outputs are here for.
Yeah, I think HAs are already have too much power.
That maybe we start out with some of the things that instead of coming up with something novel that nobody else is really doing, look at what other places are doing. So it's not as, well, they do that by distance from each other, not I haven't seen the concentric circles going out or, you know, looking at the downtown core closest to, you know, McMinnville, you can't have one within 500 feet of another. That's doesn't matter where it is. You just can't have one within 500 feet and that addresses density to a certain extent. And as far as keeping a limitation on the number of people, you can't limit the number of, if somebody buys a six bedroom home and you live next to that, well, you should anticipate that you might have as many as 15 or so people living there. So but I, I think everything that people are saying makes sense, but it sounds a lot more difficult to come up with something as opposed to look at what all these other cities have done and it's worked for them. And in fact, McMinnville increased the distance from I think 300 to 500 feet. So maybe we could just start with something that works other places. I don't know.
Well, just as an example, so when you say, when, like I was mentioning concentric rings. So you have the McMinnville model of a single distance. So you say, oh, you go back to downtown, you say, okay, in this, say, you'd say you have a, you know, geographic center of downtown, whatever that is. And say, okay, for, for this distance around here, vacation rentals can be 200 feet apart. You go out away from that, another, you know, however far, now they have to be 500 feet apart. And I'll go out, I go out again. Now they gotta be 800 feet apart. You know, some, some, something that's what I say, when you say concentric rings, you know, so, so.
Yeah, that, that's why I was thinking too, because yeah, if you just go across, across the board, then you're either going to, you know, minimize them where people want them or push them on areas where they don't. So.
Molly, Molly is online and she has her hand up and she wants to say something.
And actually I want to ask a question because if you watch the recording of the last meeting where the moratorium came up, you'll get a flavor for the kinds of questions and comments you're going to get from council. You have, someone brought up property rights, you're going to face that. One simple way to have a good conversation with council is to very, be very clear on what you're trying to prevent. Saying you might not like it is probably not going to be as effective as saying by doing this, we limit the parking issues or whatever issues that are giving you concern. I'm not trying to guide you here on what your response should be more how to package your response. So you'll have a good conversation with council. Does that make sense?
Thank you. Yes.
Okay. I'll go back on mute.
It seems like council's already chimed in on what they want. It's like the cart and the horse. I mean,
Well, not, not really.
There's two city councillors that have been appointed and then invite public in there. So are we, are we going to be one more voice to that ad hoc committee that's already been either formed or is about to be formed?
It's, it's every council goes through this where they get very interested and they form a lot of ad hoc committees. And I believe it is probably one of the behaviors that drives staff the most insane. Because it's great. People want to figure it out and do a good job. What I would strongly suggest is that you reach out to those two councillors and say, let's sit down and have a talk with you and us because we've been fielding all these requests that you're, you haven't even seen yet. And if you give them an education based on what you've seen, they will be more helpful in helping you form something that will pass council. I council is not resolved. There's, there's people who are very concerned that we're going to end up with no neighborhoods, no affordable housing, and no property rights, right? So it's a, it's the same conversation you've been having. And I, I really don't think they've decided yet, but I do know with this group, you best know why you're proposing what you're proposing. So that they look at it because they're going to be balancing individual property rights and the harm that this will do to their neighbors, right? At least I hope that's what they're going to do.
And that was a councillor Kilburg and Wheatley, was it?
Yes. Yeah. I'd reach out to them because otherwise they are going to go through what you've already been through and it will take them a lot longer. Does that make sense?
And if I could chime in, one of the things that's happening in the near future is I've invited those councillors to have a discussion with me about the comments that city council will be receiving as well as this report. Some of what I heard in addition to what councillor Olson was saying as well was that they were having some, some general thoughts about other places they could explore that perhaps we hadn't yet. That maybe they could use some of those connections. But what I didn't hear was anyone disrespect the experience of this commission and the fact that you all are hearing from public on a regular basis that you're seeing these application materials. So that was at least my interpretation of what I was hearing from them. And so I think that still making sure that you have robust comments that they can do something with could be really important, including like councillor Olson was saying, what, what problem needs solving? And, and giving, giving some thought to that. So I would, I would concur with what councillor Olson has to say on really thinking about what are we trying to solve and are we sacrificing anything by trying to solve problem one?
That's it. If you do that, they will listen to what you say, I believe. And if they don't, I'll make them, I promise. There.
Is there any way that we could be a part of that when you get together with them?
Well, I'm not going to be a part of it, but that's, that was my suggestion of you inviting them to conversation. Become a part of it. You are the most experienced of anyone in Newburgh because you've heard all the things that are going on. That's got to be a valuable resource for them. But they may not know that. And I think that's why our planning manager Clay was planning on chatting with them.
I can certainly discuss that there are members of this commission that would be happy to participate, provide input, provide guidance, something like that to that ad hoc committee because it is not determined. And to the best of my knowledge, they don't have individuals from the public selected just composed of those two councillors at this time.
Yes. They want to help. I really do believe they want to help and you can help them help. So back on mute.
Well, I think I can provide a little bit of an overview here to people's concerns and people will be free to disagree, but the, the problem that I think that everybody's thinking about is that housing costs are out of sight. And it's not any particular one thing. It's probably a lot of little things. And so this is one of those, those things that's having an effect. So for every vacation rental, that's one less long-term rental or one less bought piece of housing that's on the market for somebody to buy. Now people should be able to make money, but it's also not at the expense of the overall community. And so by not having a limit on the amount of vacation rentals that can be done, there is no limit to the amount of long-term rental housing that can be taken off the market and turned into short-term rentals. Part of that is due to the current proliferation of businesses such as Airbnb and these types of things that have, that have precipitated this. And from what I've reading, those things are going to be soon on the way out, but who knows? But anyway, regardless of what that is, if, when you're faced with this kind of thing as a regulatory body, you have to do something about it. Now, the thing that I had an objection with property rights as far as what Sharon was proposing is because it was limited to one particular area. If you regulate everybody, then there's no concern with, with property rights, at least as far as you're within code and state law and that sort of thing. We're not proposing any undue things. The, and again, if, if we're able to do this kind of regulations, McMinnville will do the kind of regulations for distances and there's no concern. And what those distances are, again, if you, if you, if you delineate what it is, exactly what it, what it needs to be, then that falls within the boundaries of fair play as far as property rights. So again, and people should be allowed to make money and there's, there's nothing we can do about existing vacations, vacation rentals. But as far as in the future, you can definitely envision a time when things have taken over and, and nobody can afford anything. And if anybody has anything out of that, I, I, but I, I suspect that's the major concern that people have with the issue.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and I want to agree with Commissioner Dale and and say, we always have little issues that come back or, or you know, there's, there's, there's issues that might be might apply to one certain things. Parking in a certain area or things like that. And, and we get lost in the weeds if we try to regulate everything like that. And so I think the best approach is just a, a spacing requirement, but I don't think a blanket one, like, like concentrically, you know, or something like that. Where, where is a certain amount of limitation because the, the biggest issue, like they said, identify an issue to take before council. The biggest issue is the affordability. You know, the, the other things are might be specific to a specific, to a certain proposal or a certain one. And, and those, as long as they fall within regulations, there's things to do, but to try to get away from the concentration and pulling a whole lot of homes out of the market without shutting that, that option off. A lot of people like to use vacation rentals and B and Bs and it brings money into the area. It brings the transient tax and everything. So.
I was just going to say that the counterbalance to limiting vacation rentals is a direct revenue from the transient lodging tax and you know, tourism in general, you know, our, our friends here from Texas, Texas, wasn't it? Yeah. And so, you know, hey, bringing money from Texas, that's good. But, uh, so, you know, it's, 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 that's, that's the two sides of the issue in my opinion.
Yeah, exactly. We don't ever more identified as a, you know, as we want to be more identified as like a suburban bedroom community or tourist destination or a little bit of both.
I think that in my lifetime, the changes to this area has been jaw dropping. And really, I think when we're talking about this, we really have to talk about one of the things that's happened here is wine country and is tourism. And we are a part of that. And while I would love to see Newburgh stay the way it has always been, a wonderful place to live. I, I see that tourism kind of is, is almost trumping it in the, in the core because it's right here where, where all the wineries are. So I think that we have to consider that as one of the main pluses for vacation rentals.
And to that point, Sharon, the, I think you're absolutely right because there, I mean, I've been here in a much shorter time than you, I'm sure. And. It has already changed so much and just, in just the minor time that I have been here. Um. I am associated with the wine country, like it is blowing up and continues to. And if we take a look at that density map again, we're looking at that downtown corridor, like that's where the big concentration is. So we could say concentric circles and thinking that that is the destination, but think about the waterfront plan that's coming up. Like that's going to be an entirely different thing that's not on our radar right now because it literally doesn't exist. But over the last three years, I watched that become a flat piece of land that used to be not big and so to. So I think to um Commissioner Griffith's point is that the feet apart might actually be the better way to go because. If we consider what Molly Olson was saying and is like, what is the goal that we're looking to achieve? And I think you both um tie that in very well. It's, it's the affordability of living here and also. I think the things that like trash, noise, um parking, a lot of that pie chart that Clay was pointing out to us. Really comes down to a quality of living. So what are we trying to do? We're trying to um. Make this structure around vacation rentals that allows the cost of living to remain affordable to those who are local, to those who are native. Um. While also maintaining a healthy quality of life. While bringing in that transient tax while not discriminating against property owners. And so. The feet seems to be a good way to do that, to your point, because of how much has changed and will continue to. And. That is as far as I can remember about the thoughts I had while y'all were talking, so.
One of the reasons I mentioned the distance is I look back at all the comments. When people were in opposition to these, nobody mentioned affordability. I'm not saying that's, that's definitely a legitimate topic. But if we're going to be responsive to the people that have come here, who are very, can get very emotional about this topic. It's always about uh, it's too close to our school, safety, uh noise, things like that. And that's why I go back to the distance thing. Um, that seems to me to address what we've heard from. The people who come up here and agree, there's other topics, whether it's affordability or what have you. Uh, but. If you ha, e, even if it's in the downtown core. If there's several close to each other. It doesn't sound like the people who have come up here and complained would be. Uh, supportive of that. They want less. Uh. But. I mean, there's obviously a lot of issues, whether it's affordability and everything else.
I would like to expand. So, okay, I want to expand upon what you're just saying about affordability as well. I can't, is that working? Okay, um, because if you think about the last meeting, we had the um. There is the, the gentleman, I don't even think he was actually present. Um. There is the gentleman who lived behind the house in question and the gentleman who lived in front of the house, if you recall, they were talking about the parking spaces, they weren't deep enough. I have seen that property. All, I see it on a daily basis. That person has. Invested a lot of money into their home. There's um. Trying to build a whole new property on that home. So I think to the point of affordability, yes, it's kind of not what has been directly stated, but I believe it is absolutely the undertone. With all due respect, just speaking in terms of out-of-state people, I think the concern that those people bring, which comes up a lot. And I think we all know that that comes up a lot is, yes, that person is investing in their home. Yes, there, that spot looks. A million times better, that last place that was in last month's meeting, than it did when this, before the person was reinvesting in their home for the purpose of vacation rentals. The background I do have in urban development, community planning would make me worry that it is a stage closer to gentrification. That the more that these houses get built up, yes, that's for the better. People from out of state, Texas, California, where have you, for whatever purposes. Might drive up the prices to the point of locals and that, and that's kind of what, into what I was saying. Like, yes, it's not what they're directly. Addressing, but I think that's the underlying tone of like, if I'm completely surrounded by vacation rentals, which I think his name was Chris, the younger bald gentleman. He said that there was one to his right, one in front, and then one right behind him. And I think. That we can understand that that concern of like, I am getting surrounded by vacation rentals, someone's going to come in and offer me. Five hundred thousand over market, which could be great for them, but that is the point of the concern of gentrification possibly and like that it's, if there's no control over that. That it will eventually just take over. And drive out the native people, if you will. So. That would be my theory about that.
And, and I'd like to add to that. I think that um. Yeah, I, I like the. Feet apart thing. But I don't think the feet apart thing like would change your argument. Uh, or your, the arguments that we get, the oppositions. Because I think mo, most of the oppositions, you talk about being next to school, most of the oppositions are actually because they're next to the person making. So they're not considering the school or anything, but. It would be a fair way of saying, okay, we're not gonna, we're not gonna get in that kind of situation where there's, there's. Force surrounding a person or something like that. So, yeah, I, I think that's. Kind of our consensus, wherever we, where we want to go. And it's just how we need to. Lay it out with the, with the feet apart kind of thing. Do we want to look at? All over the city limits or more like a concentric kind of thing or?
Ultimately, whatever. We recommend or the city council recommends, I think the topic touches on so many important issues, whether it's uh property rights, affordability. Some people talk about safety, whatever, that whatever we come up with is eventually put to the voters. Because. One of the things. That people don't seem to understand when they come up and uh voice their concerns about these is the criteria are there. And if they met them. You know, we can't, because they, you know, we've gone through this before where they don't think we hear them. We don't want this. Is it something that? Uh, whatever the final recommendation is, is it important enough that? Let the people of Newburgh vote on whether or not there should be whatever those limitations are or no limitations?
Okay, yeah, um. Are we ready to put something into a recommendation or?
Uh. In a perfect world, yes, it would be tonight. The, and, and I. And I mean. I know that this group could talk about it forever and ever and ever, but like I said, the city council. Does want to receive this. So if you think it's possible to formulate a recommendation, that would be ideal. And I don't know, because one of the things I haven't heard so far a whole lot is, is reference to the, the report itself. What in there was helpful, what in there was nonsensical and didn't matter to you? Um, some of the things that I think would be valuable in addition to everything that you've been talking about. What are we doing right, right now? Are there any issues with the existing conditions and the way we have them? I've heard some of that. Are the procedures we're doing correct? Are the policies or standards that we have correct, whether that's occupancy, which is where the conversation started? Um, whether that is, that is other things. One of the items that's in there noted in some of the policy comparisons is that we um have folks that are grandfathered in at this point. I think that you probably noticed that there's. Approximately seventy-four active. And there's only about forty-two that have conditional use permits or, or some kind of a permit with us or um. Or in the pipeline to get one. So there's a discrepancy there, obviously. The, some of the other things that I wanted to mention and kind of bring to your attention too. So there's procedures, there's policies, and then there's also other more programmatic approaches. So some of the things we talk about. Um, I would say kind of lightly are um enforced or enhanced enforcement. And also using more of technology programmatic solutions. So whether that is something like a solution that lets. Monitoring happen, that maybe the T L Ts or other, some other financing mechanism pays for. Us to do more monitoring to make sure that those that are in the city are good actors. And are doing what they're supposed to and that. We know for sure in a better way than we know now from the research that we've done. Which are active versus which are active and have gone through the process that they're supposed to go through.
Didn't sound like, I'm sorry.
What I didn't see in the report, or maybe I read it uh wrong. I saw like, you know, there are this many that are doing this uh lodge, the, the T, the temporary lodging tax. And those who were grandfathered in and those who have gone through the process. I was under the impression there's even a great deal more than that, who haven't bothered with either one of those. Has anyone uh, and I hate, because I have to deal with things in McMinville where they have had. Uh, they went back and went through Airbnb and the different uh rental platforms and actually looked. To see how many people were advertising. And then compare that to how many were rentals. So someone, someone has, someone me um has done that. And, and every time you do it. You get a slightly different number because I can't stop the catch at the city limits. And so there's no way for me to concisely do that. And the way that they do things, I can't tell. It's definitely on this side of the line versus that side of the line. So when I tried to do that initially, doing this, and the other part is particularly when they get close to each other. One platform versus the other platform, I can't always tell which ones I'm double counting. Some, some of those you, you can probably tell, but not. Enough to be anything resembling what I would consider reliable. Now, some of these enhanced or uh kind of tech solutions, they'll run an API off of someone's, off of their, their platforms at the same time. They can tell exactly. Or more so which ones are going on. So that's exactly the sort of compliance monitoring that you're looking for. But for us, we're using the best available information that we have because that information, we're on the outside looking in and it's just not reliable from that perspective. But I would agree with you. There are, there are certainly others that are not in our catch. I just don't know how many, unfortunately.
Uh, I was just gonna say, it sounded like from your report that you're not getting a lot of complaints over the types of things we see. People uh voicing concerns over, you know, parking or. Neighbor disputes or, you know, it seems, that seems like a, like an exception rather than a rule when it comes to everything. Is that, is that a good characterization?
Yes and no, I'll say, because on one hand, community development isn't, but we're not the main body that's supposed to receive the complaints. But. We can't distinguish between the complaints that we typically receive, we the city. Um, receive and see which ones are vacation rental related and which ones are these. So I think there's a discussion towards the end under enforcement policies that kind of talks about. Um, having a process where you essentially monitor those that are registered and ensure that there are not violations and complaints. So you kind of tie your. Your permitting completion to those identified sites and you kind of run something through that.
What I'm getting at though is, is if you're not currently seeing an uptick in those particular things, if you're not staying out to you, then it doesn't really make sense to. Devote more resources to a problem that isn't there.
Right, so. The end. And I would say. I agree with you. We, there's, there might not be a problem to solve, but the data that we have about complaints and things doesn't distinguish, so the problem could be there. But we don't know, although I would agree with you in that. Code compliance has not said that when people complain, they're like, that is definitely a vacation rental. They have said it's a complaint. They're just irritated about whatever the nuisance is. It could be a vacation rental, but they would have no idea. And they still address it, whether or not it's a vacation rental regardless. So. Solving the vacation rental has not risen to their level of getting involved or feeling they need to.
Is that, is that a matter, just adding a field, do they check, make a checkbox that it's?
That's on their. They, they use a different database.
This is a vacation rental? I mean, because it's all in your day, it's all in, you know, public record, right? So.
So.
I mean, the, the ones are legit.
If, if that was something that there was, they were asked to do, I'm sure they could look into it. That, that request hasn't come to them, so they haven't done it because they're working on whatever they're working on. So, and, and kind of to your point. It hasn't been brought to their attention that it's a problem, therefore they haven't invested time into it.
Well, and that's kind of the point that I'm making is like, well, if it really was being such a big issue, it would stand out where it's not. So.
So far, it's not.
Molly has your hand up on Zoom.
Thanks. Um, you could, you have the opportunity to make a couple of recommendations, not just density or caps. Um, recommending that we um. Understand the cost and implement better monetary. Recommending that we differentiate um. Complaints that are associated with vacation rentals. Those are recommendations you can make, which. You know, the pers, the density downtown is, is quite high, but the density elsewhere is pretty distributed. Um. When you. When you get to a point where you want to make a recommendation on how to control it, so it doesn't become dense in a neighborhood or something like that. That's. That's going to be a tougher one to sell, but they um. But what I think council would be gung ho about is, let's understand that everybody who's paying T L T should be, is. And then if there, if these are really a nuisance and a problem to our residents, we need to know about it. So those are two things you've talked about that you can definitely take to council, and I think there would be a strong appetite for them. Does it make sense?
I think so.
Thank you, Molly.
Hard, hard on Zoom because I can't see puzzled faces. I see little tiny people sitting at a bench.
I'll, I'll just start yelling at you if it's bad. Don't worry.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, um. Okay, so. Do we seek consensus for? Uh, further information towards uh code compliance? Whether, whether that is a problem or not, and, and a recommendation towards monitoring, I think, I think that's a pretty easy one. Uh, and a recommendation towards a cap, whether that cap, what form that cap takes. Uh, is up, is up in the air, but at least some sort of cap.
Can we pull up figure four on the, it's just really blurry on my thing, the map, the zoning districts? Is that possible? Uh, five, one more. Mine just looks really blurry. I was trying to read that side better. Um. To your last point, um. There, Jason, um. Could we do some kind of regulation based on just the zone, like basically if it's our one or two or three? Because then you get the. Because this is very similar to that sort of heat, like as you mentioned, the hurricane looking one, right? So that once you get down into the more commercial area downtown. That, that's kind of where we see this looks very similar to that one.
That's kind of the point I was making earlier with the zoning is that it's not, it's not distinct enough. It's not. It's uh, doesn't delineate enough. That's why you need to do distance or something.
But that's, but I guess that's what I'm saying. Could it be distance based on zone?
Uh.
Because if we look, that gray area down here is eventually going to be that waterfront property and there, it's going to be a huge mixture of commercial and residential down the line. So as that gets zoned out. It could be a, a, a feet of distance, whether it's like what um Mike was saying about McMinville, it could be like five hundred feet for certain areas and then like two hundred feet. So like Sharon was saying, like it'd make more sense to have more in the downtown area.
There compared to the heat map, there, there's a lot more heat of that just north area of the downtown commercial district that wouldn't be. Captured by them.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm not sure if that's quite. Uh. Sword. I hate to use granularity, but that's, it's not quite.
Show me on the map where you're angry, but.
So if you look at, if you look at the zone.
So, okay, yeah.
On that there, it's across.
It's okay. Okay, so you're saying it's going more northwest, north south, okay? Well, it's a suggestion. Microphone. Microphone, microphone, microphone.
You know, it's in my imagination, that is going to be just a wonderful place for people to. Come to and to go out and see the wine country. So I see that area as being primed for vacation rentals.
Not necessarily though, when you get the mix zoning, because remember there's going to be the commercial and the. And there's not gonna, there's not a huge area. That's single-family homes. I mean, there's the, not like the apartments and things down there too. So when you spread that all around.
But there will be.
There, there'll be some.
A lot of tourism and people.
Yeah, tourism, but not necessarily. Maybe, yeah.
I can't wait.
Would, what would we think about? What? Oh, thank you. Oh, my gosh.
Oh, wow.
Well, there you go. See, okay, so C three, but to what um Jason's point was that um sort of that I just above the C three of the downtown Newburgh area. The heat map sort of, of the concentration of current is, it's, it's actually kind of a little bit more up and down inside to side. Fair point. Point being, if we're going to attempt to make a recommendation in a sane amount of time, I wonder. If saying by X amount of feet. Based on zone.
I personally would say, okay, we think there needs to be some sort of cap. Here's several options. See what you think.
Okay. I recommend that be one of the options.
Just, just a quick comment. As, as someone who lives downtown. Um, remember that these vacation rentals are single-family homes, not apartments, right? Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Yes.
Okay, so the core has very few single-family homes. That's why you see your heat map more high and low. Those are the same people who have neighborhoods and kids who go to Edwards and go to school and everything else. So don't dismiss that downtown is also a neighborhood. Be careful of that. You will, you will get a, a lot of response from families that live in that area. It's not all shops, right?
And, and while I see people kind of mulling, mulling on some of the things we're talking about, I would. Um, just remind you that we do have kind of these, these buckets that are in that report and they're there for you. And there's a number of them that I've actually heard each of you mention when you've talked about some of these different approaches. Some of the ones that we've been kind of jotting down over here is some of that, that, that density based minimum distance approach. That's kind of a general broadcast on that. Would be something like the McMinnville approach. Density by proximity to something like corridors or to some other features of the community. That would be something like Ashland, Oregon. That density by zone, that would be something that's similar to seaside Oregon. So I've heard a couple of different iterations of these density based approaches being interest, being of interest. I haven't heard as much or haven't heard as much traction so far on overall caps or. Or exactly where you would want those, if those are still somewhere in the, the neighborhood of what you're interested in, that would be.
Overall cap? You mean like a hard cap on the number?
That's right. So those are a different type of approach. I haven't heard that get talked about quite as much. All those occupancy stuff.
I can see that being more open to legal challenge, I would think, but I, not a lawyer.
They, they exist. So that's, and that's some of why we put these comparisons there for you. So I mean, whether it's. Yeah, most of the ones that I feel like we've been hearing have been more related to kind of the, the density and concentration. There's been a little bit about operational kind of policies. So the maximum occupancy that I believe Commissioner Capri mentioned early on. About what's the, what's the loading that we're interested in, and those sorts of things. Um, so I just wanted to point out that we do.
No, I was gonna say, I think a hard cap would kind of ignore demographic changes and, and things like that. Where more density related is going, you know, will flow with development and things like that. A hard cap. Um, seems a little, I don't know, is draconian the right word?
I think, I think it would depend a lot on the area that was in, that where, where you could actually say we could cap it. Like, so um a vacation rental in more of the urban area might be higher than out in the R one zone. And neighborhoods.
Jeffrey, to what you're saying though. With, with the concept, because you're talking about like the future development, would the concept of keeping it with the zoning not kind of help with that growth? Like we were talking about, yeah, yeah. So but wouldn't that kind of help solve that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Versus our.
Same, same page, same page. Okay, okay. It's, I guess the cap would be dependent upon the zone though, uh, like if we're talking about a more residential or more commercial. So it's kind of harder to pick that without deciding.
There's, there's a number of different approaches. And so there are some that use a, a zone based approach to limit density. Or to limit what you can do and how often you can do it. So that would be approached. That was that seaside approach. Um, I wanted to mention two, just for food for thought, even though it's adding not, it's adding to the conversation, not making it more concise. But about, we have type one, type two, type three and type four procedures. The fours are legislative. The threes are the ones that come to you. Sometimes the decision is with the planning commission. Sometimes it's with the city council. Type twos, there's still public comment, but it's administrative decision. So typically that's a planning director decision. And type ones, there's no public comment. Those are pretty typically clear and objective criteria. So we currently use a type three for most, but not all of our zoning districts. So there are different procedures depending on the zoning district. So question for your commission, having the number come that we do. And this is discussed in the report too. Have we, are the, do you concur with the existing procedures? Or do you have any?
No.
Feelings about that?
I, I've thought of, where are we really just rubber stamping if they, I would prefer that. We don't even hear about them. I mean, that they be done. At a, as a level two, because if they meet, I mean, it sounds like we're looking at boxes that have been checked. And if they're checked, then we say yes. I don't think we need to be the ones to make sure the boxes are checked.
So I, I believe uh it's level three, just for the, the uh. The reason you raised earlier that we get people in here with concerns and to, to have. Uh, uh, the public be able to raise their concerns to the commission is a much, uh. I hate to say mollifying, but that's basically what it is. Step then just going before the planning director. And so I, I believe that's the thought process with that. Most of these are rubber stamps, to be honest, let's be honest, but uh, uh, some of them can be quite contentious, as you've seen, so. With a couple.
But we've never said no, we haven't said no to a single one since I've been on this that's met the criteria. And, and I think it also frustrates the people because we read the legal statement. You're supposed to cite what your objection is based on code. And then rarely does anyone do that. And then they leave sometimes more frustrated because they've, it, that, they think we don't hear that.
Trying to remember, I think there has been one, I think it was before you were here, where there was some contentious issue and it, it. It got kicked back and they had to redo their application. And they did go back and redo the application and then came back and I, I can't, I, I believe those were vacation rental, but I, I could be mistaken on that. But it's, it, again, it's not so much that. Uh. That, that, the application is denied, it's that the public has a chance to go before this body. Whether, whether that result is in favor or not, that's, it, it shows, it shows that. We as, as a commission are able to hear them, should that, or should that need arise, so.
And that has because we've gotten enough feedback now we're talking about. So Claire, you suggest, or you op? Are you saying that we can propose a type for the council to review this?
I'm asking, uh, just because we use, we use procedures, some and some that don't come before your commission. Do go through a type two procedure. So there's still a public comment period. There's not a hearing. Um, so I'm not suggesting that we should or should not do one or the other. I'm more asking your opinions based on your experience. Are we doing it the right way now? Is there a way that you think would make more sense?
Um, I, I don't see any problem with the procedures. I mean, they're, they're, they're gone through and, and, and they're met. Um, some of the things I'd like to see is, you know, we talked about at least a mechanism for. Um, monitoring enforcement and then stricter enforcement on um the unregulated. Bring them, you know, some mechanism to bring them to the permit process or have them, you know, seize what they're doing. And, and get more of a handle on that. So maybe, maybe like a three pong thing. More enforcement with regard to unregulated. Um, places doing it, uh, better tracking. As to if there are incidences and things like that, we need to know about. And then looking ultimately at a density control. That is something that we can agree on and that serves the community as far as. Not letting the numbers get too out of hand and addressing the affordability issue.
Um, I feel like I can kind of tie maybe a couple of points in here with what you're saying. Um, because you were making a point that like, do we need to have enforcement and follow up with the T L T? Because if it's not, if there's only been like one official complaint, was that, you were saying that earlier, like, why worry about regulating? Maybe it's not a matter of regulating the current system, but it's using like the T L T to actually try and bring in. What, like you're just saying, Jeffrey, those who are not compliant and making sure that the T L T is used for further T L T and sustaining. So if, if we're going to make any proposals towards compliance, it shouldn't be towards necessarily monitoring the existing ones. Maybe until there might be a better need, if in the future more complaints start to come in, then that could be reconsidered. But that if we're going to make a compliance proposal, that'd be using the existing T L T to then regulate and bring into the permitting process. Those who are.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
Write that down, Clay.
Fairly low hanging fruit.
No, I didn't catch all of that. I was, I was jotting down what I've kind of heard.
I think, I think that's fairly low hanging fruit as well, so.
Great. Um, what I was saying, Clay, is that um, we've kind of talked about what to use the T L T towards. And that if we were to make a compliance recommendation that um, any existing T L T from permitted vacation rentals. Go towards bringing in those that we can determine are not permitted. Were you saying those like a? AI? So there's like a software that others are using or something?
Yeah, there's a, there's a number of different vendors and, and tech solutions that could be used. And so one recommendation could be to finance improved monitoring for uh, for compliance. With existing regulations permitting T L T by using T L T as a funding source. So it's a positive feedback.
So maybe we recommend that, that T L T be used for that technology to be able to pull those not compliance. As we were talking earlier, compliance, monitoring and cap. So that could cover a compliance recommendation. Monitoring, we're kind of already doing it. Were we saying that, yes, rubber stamping, but within the confines of the permits that are, you know, the. Legislation that already exists, which can be changed by other manners, like other checkboxes that could be rubber stamped on the line. So if I'm kind of tip, tracking my notes, it'd be more of like deciding a recommendation we can make for a cap.
And just a cap based on what, on density or on. Total numbers or.
It could, yeah, I think what we, like Clay pointed out, the Ashland and Seaside ones are the ones that were discussed most, whether it's in just a straight. Um, measurable distance or if it's zoned distance, maybe that could be something that could be discussed with council. Like depending on which way they would like to go, it could be one or the other. If it's by zone and how many within a certain zone. Or if it's just, if it's not based on zoning, if it's just based on radius.
And um, remind me, what was the, the Ashland model again?
The, one second to look that one up. So I wrote down a kind of proximity to corridors. And so it's using community features. Um, are you already at?
Sorry. But that was on the whole time. Um, property within 200 feet of a boulevard or avenue and neighborhood collector shall not exceed nine units. Um, per approved rental with frontage on boulevard streets for lots without boulevard frontage or within 200 foot buffer. Of a maximum of seven units. It's still just a lot of numbers. So the total number of units, including the owner, that is equal to a square footage of 1,800 square feet. Contiguous lot over the ownership, maybe confined maximum units. What is it?
So. Yeah, I like that more than, more than just a straight zoning because it's, it's more specific on, you know, as far as what, what exists. And, and. Looks like it could be more directed to specific communities, like, like it was there. And then more directed to our community versus just a blanket kind of deal.
And your commission is certainly welcome to put it in your own words, but having these cases give us an example that we're not completely shooting from the hip. So you could certainly say that, you know, we're looking for this or that. We're looking for cap. We're looking to regulate in this direction. There's a model that is kind of in that direction, but maybe it doesn't have to be the fit for Newburgh.
Clay?
Yes.
If, if um, if someone was recommending um. A limit that's just based on they can't be closer than 500 feet apart. Is there a way to calculate the number of vacation rentals that potentially could then be in Newburgh from that?
I mean, I think. I think, I think the math for that would, yes, I think that we could, that would probably be some kind of a buffer analysis. And I don't think that that's beyond the possibility. But when I think about what we've already seen for the map and the clustering configuration and scatter that we see. That the likelihood of us, I mean, we could set a cap based on that calculation. That would be easy. But um, yeah, so I guess in answer your question, could we do the math? Yes, we could.
I think the, the reason I asked it is not to establish a cap that's a number. But to explain to council, if we did this, the impact would be. Um, we would allow 2,000 vacation rentals by owner. So we think we're not inhibiting, we're simply spreading them out. You, you see what I mean? When you, they're going to ask, what's the impact of doing what you want to do? So that could be something you might want to think about if you're suggesting limits is to say. Because right now you've said it's less than a tenth of a percent of the housing units in Newburgh. So do we have a problem?
It's less than a hundredth.
Hundredth worse. So do we have a problem, right? Um, if you put a, a limit in place so that you don't get to a point where you have a problem. You'll need to explain what that limit does to the number of vacation rentals. That was my only point.
Did that figure include, that only includes the ones that we know about.
That is definitely correct.
Agreed that there are a lot more than that.
We've, there's a completely unknown number. I have no idea what those might be. And anything that I gave would be complete speculation, but absolutely. I mean, we just don't, then be completely dark.
And we wouldn't be talking about this if we didn't think we had a problem. Uh, it's the, I mean, we unanimously recommend, recommended a moratorium. For a reason, because we sit here uh, and listen to people who are very emotional and upset about these. So I don't know how many of those you have to have before you say it's a problem, but uh, I think it's a problem. Just based on the short time I've been on this and listening to the number of people and is sometimes the, is animated is, I mean, they're. It really hits them. Uh, and it, let's hypothetically say we don't have a problem. Well, given how long government takes to do anything, if we wait till we have a problem, we'll be five years into it before there's a solution.
I agree, Mike. Thank you.
There's no, no argument, Mike. Just, just trying to think about how it's going to play when you take it to council. They haven't heard all the screaming. And.
I, I agree. I, I think what's a little disappointing is a little deference to the planning commission. We would not have gotten to the point we did and made a unanimous recommendation for a short moratorium. If we didn't think there was a reason for that.
I was just gonna add that there's, there's definitely such a thing as an easily anticipated problem, even though it's not yet a problem.
Right. And, and this is good, right? So when you make your recommendation. You just have to, I'm trying to throw out the things they're going to say so that you're ready to respond to them. So, because it should be a discussion, Clay, this really shouldn't just be a piece of paper presented. This should be a discussion because I think council needs to hear all of planning commission. That's, that's my opinion. I don't know if we can arrange that or not. We had a joint session once.
Counselor Olson, are you suggesting that we should see about doing a joint work session?
You might discuss it with those two counselors.
I'm, yep, and I'm, I'm happy to do that. And um, I have no, no problem bringing that forward. And if that's part of this commission's recommendation, because you'd like to be part of the conversation, that's, that's certainly your prerogative as well.
Yeah, just a thought.
And to um, come in little back to what Clay was saying and tying in what Mary was mentioning regarding a potential cap. And how we could present that in a way that could be digestible. Um, I feel like what Mary was kind of getting, Molly, sorry, uh, what Molly was getting at was that. If we're gonna uh, have a cap, why? Um, and it's to keep it from becoming a problem because that's what we are here. We've, we've heard it's a problem. Um, it's, it's really hard to come up with specific numbers without having a discussion with them. So I appreciate where she's coming from on that too. But I think the point that she was, that you were kind of getting at Molly was that we could have a cap where um, it's like per radius. Or like some kind of ratio when there's um, a, a square, like a measurable space with X amount of homes. Or we can keep that ratio to the amount of homes in Newburgh to kind of keep it at a, a certain percentage and to not exceed that. So if right now, or you say we're at a hundredth of a percent, fantastic. Like, how can we create a formula that would keep the, the percentage? Of the ratio of homes that are registered vacation rentals to privately owned, not rentals. To not exceed a certain percentage. Like, how could we create a formula where we continuously account for? All, all of the inbound homes that are coming between the Spring Brook Crossing and the waterfront. Like, how could we? It's, it's, it's hard to make a cap with so much inbound growth on that ratio, but like, how? On that ratio, but like how coming up with a formula that would keep a measurable space to X amount to not exceed, I don't. Two percent?
Could someone reach out to the communities that are listed? Uh, that's, those are, you know, definitely helpful, hard data, but maybe reach out to the community and say, can you tell us what prompted you to come up with these? What was the problem that you identified? And do you think, did your solution, did it, was it a fix, or do you feel like it didn't go far enough so that we can maybe? Because maybe some of these people would say, you know, yeah, we did that, but we should have done. A whole lot more or whatever, I I I'd be curious not to, you know, McMinn, why did McMinnville? Have a three hundred feet and then increase it to five hundred, I'd really like to hear what kind of feedback they had. Uh, that for that got them to the point where they increased the distance.
And did it work?
One, one of the things I would just say, and so can staff do that? Of course we can, we would be happy to. But at this point, the only direction that we've gotten from the city council is to give them an update. And so we're trying to do a lot without doing too much. Is what we're trying to do so far, and so the idea of kind of guessing which which jurisdictions would be good to inquire with and those sorts of things, to me, that seems like that. Could could start being some. Uh, some serious drifting from what our core ask was, which was to give them update, but um, if. Also, if that sort of thing, reaching out to the right cases is part of your recommendation, again. I think that's very actionable for future direction if the city council chooses to put this on our project list. Because right now, we don't have any changes to the code as part of our project list that we would get from the city council. And I I wanted to add um. One more thing too, just for some of the food for thought, because I kind of heard the three points that seem like. People are kind of playing around with their thinking about the the cap or density based type of regulation. The enhanced monitoring for violations and what they're doing associated with vacation rentals. And enhanced monitoring associated with compliance, um, specifically permitting and T L Ts. So those are, those are things that I'm starting to hear, but. If if those went through, if all those, if those recommendations came about, there was some kind of. Uh, most of the recommendations I've heard have been some form of density type stuff, if those happen. Um, what does it look like? What happens if we find the the operators that are already doing things in the community that we don't currently have on our radar? Um, and does the policy that have gone to effect do what we need them to do? So that's just food for thought. And do you think it would do what you want it to do?
As far as what would happen to those not in compliance and give them a timeframe to get in compliance or cease operation. You know, basically.
What if they're already inside the density limits? Or whatever, what if you, if there was some piece of that package that's a cap? Or shaped like a cap.
So what if they're in a density limit area that's already hit its cap?
Well, yeah. The permitted ones you'd have to grandfather in, and maybe you could do like a ninety day period to either get permitted and be grandfathered or to.
We, we currently have have operations that are grandfathered in, and they're not required to get a permit, which makes compliance a real challenge. So would you want them to be grandfathered in perpetuity, or is there an amortization period that you would prefer?
An amortization period, everything.
Because that, because that's the situation we're in, so that's why to me, that's a good, if that's something that. That's what we want, now, if if people have been doing it, and you think that's a vested right, they shouldn't have, they should be able to keep doing what they're doing. Then I think that would be a a good clarification as well.
Yeah, well, I I think everything else we're suggesting. Um, hinges somewhat on accurate numbers and accurate permitting. So we take the wild west component out a bit of a little bit, like you talked about, so, so yeah, absolutely.
I think when it comes to that, there's a transition period, so we have these people out of compliance with the rules pass. They. Understand that they're they're within the density cap, but. You know. Before the rules passed, there there was no density cap they had to worry about, all they had to worry about was they were not in compliance when it come to paying their taxes, so. You say, okay, you've got this. Uh, you know, time to get a compliance, and then also you're inside this density cap, but you're grandfathered in for that point, but after a particular. Timeframe after the rules pass, then you have some other. I'm not sure, which is what a good punitive measure would be, since you did trying to track when they started versus when you caught them and then. Back taxes, I don't even want to tackle that mess, but. There there there's, there's gotta be some some method of enforcement, because then if if there isn't, people just say, well. Oh, I didn't know about that, and and uh, now I'm inside the D C and you have to let me stay, so.
Yeah, but basically, if you like you take like a more torque, like a time period, and then ninety days, ninety days to get compliant. Are. The cease, you know, yeah, yeah, make it pretty cut and dried. And then if you if you fail to cease, then there's some sort of mechanism in code enforcement to. Follow through with that.
Can I give you, can I give your commission a couple of examples on this one? So Hood River. Thank you, James. So in Hood River qualifies as a lawfully pre-existing. Uh, if the home was used as a vacation rental between start date, date of ordinance. The owner obtained cert- uh, a T L T certificate of authority and paid the hotel tax, so they have to determine that they did qualify as pre-existing. And then after five years, the rental must be in compliance with the parking standards associated with their new. Whatever the new standards are, that's what they do, and after seven years, the rental must be in full compliance. So they have a different situation focused on parking, and then I want to also mention Lincoln City. And a vac- vacation rental that is not a conditional use and was approved prior to the current standards. Can continue operation provided that the owner obtains an annual vacation rental dwelling license until the license holder sells, transfers, or conveys the property. So those would be two approaches. What 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 do you, do you want me to read it again? A vacation rental that is not a conditional use and was approved prior to current standards can continue operation, provided that the owner obtains an annual vacation rental. Dwelling license until the license holder sells, transfers, or conveys the property. So, so what, so I heard a couple of oohs.
So that that opens up all kinds of opportunity for, you know, applying this, applying pressure to uh. To comply with the rules for that sort of thing.
Well, and and one of the things I would point out is all those that get conditional use permits without it, it runs with the land, so there's no annual renewal or. Those sorts of things, and if the property is sold.
Right, and so, but so, correct me if I'm wrong, the the. Uh, the Lincoln City case is for people that didn't get the conditional use permit are out of compliance, but. They said, okay, well, you know, I've been doing this beforehand, and okay, until I get in compliance, I got it, I gotta pay a licensing fee every year. Is that right? Yeah, see, that's that's perfect.
Kind of go back to what you're saying, that could also be the time where those who were not previously in compliance and are hoping to get pulled in properly. Could have the opportunity if those don't renew, that could open the doors, yeah. Exactly, that's.
Do we feel like we want to put anything into a? Formal recommendation or? Are we there yet?
I think it's um, to kind of echo what I think Mike was saying a little bit earlier, it was a little disheartening with the amount of um. Feedback we've received from the community to have found out that the moratorium was um, passed so quickly. Um, or not passed so quickly, um, I think we can definitely make a recommendation, but it it also, like what Molly was saying, it would. Probably behoove us to actually have some kind of joint commission where we could discuss this with the city council, because we could. Do our best and make perfect sense of everything we want to say, and if they have absolutely no intention of doing something because of. Something we are unaware of, or something we overlooked, and if we put something together formally and they just shut it right back down, doesn't, it just seems like it might be a better use of time. And beneficial to the city if we could make sure that anything we want to run past, then we have the opportunity to discuss in some kind of joint commission.
So um, what about a recommendation that we have a um, joint session?
I would like to recommend that we have a joint session.
Second?
You are, you are welcome to deliberate about this, but I just want to be clear. When you guys, when your commission decides if if this is what you decide to do, that's fine, that's what we'll take forward, and that's what I'll ask, but um. But if there's anything else from this evening that you want to convey at the same time. I can, we can include all that stuff that you want, that that you have come to a consensus with, so I don't want to. I read the ju- the joint work session recommendation is is fine, so I don't want to make light of that, um, but I just want to encourage you that. Anything that you've been brought, bringing up last night. You're you're welcome to include that.
Well, I I think both is probably in order is we we got some fairly concise points that I think you've you've got a handle on, and then. We also do a joint session and then. Yeah.
Clay, have you like bullet pointed those, like should, can we do a quick review of what those are so we can make any clarifications?
I would be happy to.
Thank you.
Give me one moment. So I have, I have three that I would consider solid and two that I would consider squishy. And so you can decide what you want to do, do with those. So. Give me one second to to write this down.
While he's doing that, I'll point out there's actually a movie quote where they say squiffy. It's an English movie, and things go a little squiffy, is the sideways, they like that, that could be an applicable term here, apparently.
And what is the movie you quoted?
Hot Fuzz.
The what?
The movie was Hot Fuzz, was that, was it Simon, was his name, Simon Pick?
It is Simon Pick.
It is, thank you, Simon Pick and Nick Cross, and things will went a little squiffy, thank you, I'm so glad I could bring that. They're not going to transcribe that on the meeting, so. Good.
Alright, so the the bullets that I think I've caught so far, and I'm happy to be corrected. Uh, but what I have so far is that the commission would recommend a joint work session with the city council. To continue looking into and addressing vacation rental regulate, like regulatory options. Enhance uh, enhanced monitoring of permit and T L T enforcement. Enhanced monitoring of violations and complaints associated with vacation rentals. And then the squishy one one regulation based on, fill in the blank, I have heard. Caps talked about very broadly, and I've heard a a number of things associated with kind of the concentration or density based approaches. So I don't know if that's ready to be. Consensitized or what what you all might be able to do, but that's.
Clarify the solid part is that there should be some sort of cap, but what manner that cap takes is squishy. Okay, do you see the difference?
I do, I do, and so I don't know what that is either, but I can use.
I like the density.
Yeah, you could just put a recommendation, um, for the joint meeting and for the two solid ones, but then before that. And and to discuss the need for some sort of manageable cap.
And would you, would?
Well, in zones or density or whatever.
Would the commission be okay with the wording of a density based cap?
Yeah, yeah.
Does that capture it, or is that not?
Yeah, density would be better, yeah.
A dense, so if the density based cap.
Yeah.
With subject to future development, like in consideration of everything that's impending in this town, like just. Well, yeah, okay, as long as we're, yeah.
And then the last one, again, this is probably even more squishy, would be the um. Discussion of amortization of non-compliant operators. But I'm open to.
Squishy with, I I think everybody agrees with that Lincoln City thing was a very elegant solution.
Yeah, and that'd have to be addressed anyway at some point if there were.
Yeah, and that's the mechanical.
One without the other.
Mechanical enforcement thing, so.
And Clay, I actually had a question for you on that, because one of the things that you said was solid was, would you say the T L C, the T L T compliant? Um, enforcement of those not in compliance with that kind of type. It was, what was, could you go to the first bullets that you said the tight ones?
The.
Yeah, enforcement of, or?
Enhanced monitoring, and it would be, I should say. I said enhanced monitoring, we have discussed it, and we have used, we've said monitoring, we have said enforcement, and I'm happy to put enforcement in there with the T L T. And I'm happy to put enforcement in there with both the, with the monitor, with the uh, for a violation, so it'd be. Enhanced enforcement of permit and T L T compliance and enhanced compliance or enhanced enforcement. Of violations associated with vacation rental operations.
It, uh, I'm just curious if I, is it enhanced or? What what enhance makes it sound to me like somebody's doing something, right, I'm hearing is none of that's being done right now.
It's a, I mean, so the.
Would you prefer improved?
So those occur in that staff reach out, staff do not. We would change what we're doing to do more than we are now, so do we send welcome packets, do we encourage people to do it, do we go out and audit annually? I don't think so. So I don't, honestly, I haven't been here long enough to know exactly what it is we do to check on those and how often that happens. But we do things to try and get people to do it, could we do more? I'm certain that we could.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so en- enhanced, enhanced works, yeah, because we're this.
Does, does the commission like enhanced enforcement or like enhanced monitoring?
I kind of like enhanced enforcement, are we gonna enhance, are we gonna hand handily monitor people doing things wrong, or are we gonna act and enforce them?
Definitely enhance enforcement with regard to the um, non-compliant. Ones we regard.
You can monitor people not being compliant, or you can enforce compliance, and I feel like that would be the.
I mean, it starts sounding so much like.
But isn't that the point, is that we need a little bit more monitoring of that?
Can I, um, I'd be open to trying to split the difference between, because I thought I heard a couple of different things from a couple of different people. Enhanced enforcement of permit and T L T activities and compliance. And enhance in enhanced monitoring of violations and complaints.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Yes.
And then going back to item five. Discussion of amortization of non-compliant operator, operators using approaches similar to those of Lincoln City. I can, and I would be happy to try and say those one time through without stopping, see if it is close to what you want. And then your commission, if that fits, you could take that and just either amend it. Or you could say, this is what we like, and that is, that was what we intended to give staff. Would that, would you like me to try and proceed with that? Okay.
Do it to it.
Alright, so what staff is hearing, the recommendation from your commission is, is that. The city council and the planning commission engage in a joint work session to. Investigate and consider regulatory approaches for vacation rentals. That. They, that they consider enhanced enforcement of permit and T L T. Activities or compliance. That they consider enhanced monitoring of violations and code com- and complaints associated with vacation rental activities. That they discuss the need for regulation based on a density based cap. And that there is a discussion. Discussion of amortization of non-compliant operators similar to the case found in Lincoln City.
Sounds good.
Policy. Okay. Noted.
We brought all these beautiful post-its, and we didn't even get to use any of them.
You didn't, no one on this commission made me go there, so you were having a nice conversation, I didn't have to break out. Crafts and tools and things like that and do voting mechanisms. So would your commission, so if if a, if that sounds right to a commission, and one of your, and someone wants to make a motion to. Have that proceed, then I'll I'll basically take that to the city council as part of the update, but. That will go to them, and I will in the kind of the background, see if they want to jump because of the comment being formed the way it is, including a request for a. Um, a joint work session, I would engage with either the planning commission liaison or the mayor, since he sets the agenda. Um, to determine how to move forward that meets the the will of the city council. So I'll try and see if that's palatable in that form and what way they would like to receive it.
And if it is not palatable, does everything get shot down and then the discussion's over, or do we have time to rebuttal, if you will?
The council will receive this. The council will receive this no matter what, even if, if, if one piece of this is for some reason. It's not, there, there's not an interest in having that move forward that way, then the other things will still be brought to their attention. So these. All of what you've talked about and what this is distilled down to will still go to the city council no matter what.
And is this something that's presented to them in the council meeting or is this something that?
Yes, I plan on making, um. The mayor, for the purposes of agendizing, aware of this ahead of time, because it has an implication for the agenda. And because we have a counselor here, um, as a liaison, and she is also aware, and I might be able to speak with her. On this item separately as well to find the best path. So I can't make any promises on exactly how things are gonna be received, but I can certainly work within the channels we have available.
Yeah, and I, I think, um. Because two counselors have expressed interest in this topic. What you can do is in your communication to Bill, the mayor. You can, um, because you are knowledgeable that these two have expressed interest in forming a committee. Bill can also just talk to them. The simplest thing is to say, I'd like to get this on. This is coming to you, you need to know that, uh, planning commission would like to have a conversation with you.
Yep.
And see where it goes from there.
Absolutely.
We have a motion?
I move that we, uh, do that. Sorry, it's late now.
And I second that.
We have a motion to present the, the language that, uh, Clay has presented to us in the second. Um, can we get a vote, please?
Jeff Musaw.
Yes.
Jason Dale.
Yes.
Laney Quinn.
Yes.
Sharon Capri.
Yes.
Mike Griffiths.
Yes.
The motion to do that passes.
Thank you very much, everyone.
And thank you for all your, all your time on that, Clay.
And your wonderful note taking.
It'd have been better, but we'll, but we'll still go forward with it, so.
Next, we have items from commissioners, if anybody has anything else. Seeing none, let's go ahead and adjourn the September fourteenth meeting of the Newburgh Planning Commission. Everyone, have a good evening.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Molly.